Good evening, everyone. This is the City Council Subcommittee Conference on being held on Monday, March 14th, 6:00 PM. The following subject matter will be discussed to discuss the capital improvement plan for FY23, FY27. Officials invited to attend to the Subcommittee meeting are all members of the City Chelsea Council, the City Manager Tom Ambrosino, Deputy City Manager Ned Keefe, interim DBW Commissioner Lou Mamolet, Housing and Community Development Director Alex Train, and all members of the public. At this time, I'll ask the Clerk to read the roll.
Counselor Ray Cooper, roll. Counselor Teneri Garcia.
President.
Counselor Robinson.
Here.
Counselor Taylor.
Here.
Counselor Lopez.
Here.
Counselor Vega Maldonado.
Present.
Counselor Vazaneda.
Here.
Counselor Brown.
President.
Counselor Vito.
Present.
Counselor De Jesus.
President.
And Counselor Judah Garcia. Yes, so one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. You have a call, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. So I'll just turn over right now. At the moment, we've all received a copy of the CIP in front of us, and we'll allow the City Manager now to just guide us through the project and explain it, and then we'll follow up with questions.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Counselors. So I'm going to give a brief overview of the CIP. This is a pretty robust CIP proposal. I think it's the most money that I've ever proposed. It's over $24 million. What is different about this year's proposal is that it includes very little proposed borrowing, and mostly that's due to the fact that we've had this one-time infusion of federal APDA dollars that we are going to use to fund a fair amount of our capital projects over the next few years. So this is money that is coming to the city for the lost revenues that we incurred due to COVID, and so we're going to spend on capital projects, given that it is a one-time infusion of funds. So that is allowing us to avoid the typical borrowing that we do in the CIP. The only borrowing that's proposed is for one project, and that is the lead pipe replacement project in here. We do that annually every year. We borrow money for that project from the MWRA under a special program they have that is a 10-year zero-interest loan program. So we borrow the money, we pay it back in equal 10-year installments. The majority of the cash is coming out of a combination of APDA funds, free cash, which we had a substantial certification just recently, and there's one project that I'm proposing. We spend money out of general stabilization. That's the fire ladder proposal. So I'm going to go through these projects. First, I'm going to focus only on the FY23 portion of this proposal. If you do have questions on a project that we've put a placeholder in for the out-years, I'm happy to answer a question about why that project is in there, but I'm going to focus on the FY23 because that's where the city needs your vote to do the, to give the authorization to move forward with these projects. And just for process purposes, once the council gives an indication to us as to the projects they are prepared to approve, we will then prepare an appropriate order for the council to vote on, probably sometime in late April, early May. So with that said, I'm just going to walk through the projects, give a very brief overview, and pause if the counselors have any questions. Honestly, most of the questions you have, I won't be able to answer, which is why I have these folks behind me. Lou Mamolet, Acting DPW Public Works Commissioner, Alex Train, who is Director of Housing and Community Development, and Rebecca, who's spent a lot of time on these projects, and Kate as well. So they know the details far better than I, so for many of the questions, I'll turn to them, and they'll come up and answer them. But let me just start by going through one by one. So what you have on the screen is the list of projects. In the book, there's detail that follows this page on each of the projects, and I'm just going to give a quick overview. So we'll start with number one. Number one is a request for $100,000 for architectural services. So every year, we have significant money in this budget for public building renovations, but it always starts with getting an architect to come in and give us some sense as to the design and what it will cost to do the work. And so each year, we do renovations. At the same time each year, we're designing renovations for the subsequent year. And so this is a typical request we do each year to set aside some funds for architectural services for public building renovations. And it's a request for $100,000 that will come out of free cash. Page 28 in the book. So the Excel spreadsheet that has all the projects appears on pages 28 through 30, actually 28 through 31, and then right behind that, starting on page 32, are the projects in the order in which they appear in the Excel spreadsheet. Okay, so if no questions, I'll go to the next project. That is the city ad renovations. So this is year two of the city ad renovation work. So just a little bit of backdrop on the city ad renovations. At one point, we were contemplating, I shouldn't say "we," the city was contemplating building a brand-new DPW facility at a different location because this current facility is on kind of a constrained site and is really a bit dilapidated. We thought, so when I came on board, that was sort of the plan, but honestly, no, there is no site that you can acquire in this city for any reasonable number at this point, especially not an industrial parcel where a DPW would fit. So about two years ago, we decided that rather than do that, we would engage in a substantial renovation of the existing building and be able to get at least another 10-plus years out of this facility where it currently exists. At some point, 10-plus years from now, the city may still be in, may still be in a position where it has to relocate this facility, but this is going to buy us at least a decade, if not more, with these substantial renovations. We started last year with the new roof, and this is Phase Two, which involves significant work on the exterior of the building. And there'll probably be a Phase Three and perhaps even a Phase Four coming, but this is a proposal to spend another million, over and above the million we approved last year for exterior work on the building.
Mr. City Manager, there's no breakdown as far as, and I'm sure that whoever proposed this or put this together was able to break it further down. So I'm just curious as to a million dollars, at least to a layman's eyes such as myself, seems exorbitant when you're talking about just a replacement of doors. So is there a way to get an idea of how that number arrived, the number of doors, and the cost that they're looking at, and what else besides just replacement of the overhead doors is involved in that? So if we could have some further explanation, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, I can turn to Lou. I think it involves the start of some of the interior office work as well, but I don't know what the breakdown is.
So to answer your specific question, the cost estimate that we have right now for the replacement of the doors, all the overhead doors, as well as replace the exterior metal skin around the steel structural members, is right around $750,000, which would leave us about another $250,000 to start doing some type of interior renovation. As the city manager talked about, additional phases, I think part of what we probably want to do is make sure we understand the extent of that before we expend that $250,000, so it's part of a plan that actually makes sense, especially also to figure out whether or not we can compartmentalize something into just what's remaining for money and get something productive out of it in case we don't get that funding for the following year.
So is there an idea of, again, rather than leave an open slot, an idea of what type of purchases would be allowed under this and what isn't, so that it could be a little bit more understood by members of the council? So again, you say it's generally just renovation, but just curious what falls into that category, so to speak, and what is bought? And follow-up question, not only for this one, but the other ones. Who oversees the purchases or the reviews of all of these things that are bought to say that it does fall within the purview and guidelines? Is it the controller here who goes in with the final statement of, you know, X amount of whatever equipment or paper or whatever it may be? Who ends up approving any of the purchases beyond that's not, if it's not actually specified?
So I believe the way it's worded, clearly the expenditure is only for improvements to the building. The way it's been described right now is it's part of an ongoing program. We started last year with the roof, and I think the idea here is that instead of spending $8 or $10 million to replace a building and doing it all in one shot, the idea is to figure out, could we extend the life of this building with smaller purchases? The roof was sort of the most critical, and that's already been done in last year's. The next piece, obviously, is the overhead doors and the rest of the exterior of the building. The balance of the building has masonry on the exterior, so the belief is that we could, you know, that that will last during that 10-year period. If you, what you're asking is, what is the next plan for the remainder of this? I think what we need, there's not enough money in the balance of that appropriation to do an entire renovation of the inside of the building. So what we're going to have to do is prioritize what renovations need to happen. If it were up to me, it's like locker rooms and sanitary facilities because those are the areas that are sort of in the worst shape as far as offices and things like that. Those are more amenities than necessities, so I think that's what would be my focus as the head of Public Works Department. I'm also responsible for managing the buildings and grounds, so I think, I think the decision on the technical end of it, I'm also the city engineer, so I think the technical end of it falls to me. As far as getting an approval for a longer-range plan, I think we would be working through the city manager to understand something that makes sense financially and that we could bring to the council as part of a longer-range plan. But right now, this is simply a request for a one-time use, a one-time appropriation of money for the specifics that are outlined here, which is overhead doors, the exterior skin of the building, metal skin, and some limited internal.
Well, so what I'm asking is, you just opened up a better explanation. You're saying lockers and showers and stuff. So what I'm asking is, Tom, you know, is there, when they're presenting this or you're presenting this, it's, we just see $1 million without a specific, clear explanation of how the dollars are going to be spent or the breakdown? So, but there's obviously a plan in place or an idea of how the money is going to be spent, and so I'm just curious if this is a greater explanation or breakdown of all these car factors, so to say, well, we got a budget, a, an estimate for $750,000 for the overhead doors. Now we have $250,000. This is what our estimate is going to be. Already, we have an estimate for locker room equipment, renovations of bathrooms, and that's the number we have in front of us. And I'm just curious if, again, if it's rather than just a line item of a thousand, of a million, is that further broken down anywhere else, and can that ever be, you know, shown to the rest of the colleagues here?
It's not broken down yet. So basically, the idea was, look, you've got a, you've got a rough estimate as what the siding and the overhead doors are going to cost you of $750. We know construction costs are starting to skyrocket now. So let's ask for a million. We'll likely, we'll go out to bid for the overhead doors and the siding. Hopefully, we'll come in with a number that's somewhere close to $750, although it's likely to be higher. So we'll do that work. To the extent that there's money left over from this million, and I would think there'll be some, but probably not $250,000, we'll start working on architectural design work for the interior of this building to see what kind of improvements we want to do to the interior of the building. We'll have some money left over, and then in the CIP for next year, assuming we're ready, I would come to you and say, okay, the roof is done, the overhead doors, the siding is done, we have a design for the interior of the work, we have some sense as a ballpark of what this is going to cost, and here's a proposal to get us to the finish line on this building. So the specific answer to your question is, I don't have a breakdown, and if the council only wants to fund the siding and the overhead doors and nothing more, you could reduce this a little, but given that we have an estimate for $750,000 that's a little dated right now, I would say you still need to cushion this. So if you want to say, we don't want you doing anything in the interior, just do those two things where you have the estimate for. You could probably knock this down by $150,000 or so, and we'll move forward with $850,000 and hope that that's sufficient for us to do the X, the remaining exterior work. It will not leave anything left over for us to, you know, have a little room to start thinking about the interior.
Again, I don't want you to, I don't want to sound like I'm against having first-class facilities for our, you know, DPW workers, that they have showers to come in. I mean, they're out there, and it's a, it's a dirty job. Let's just say it is a dirty job. So if they could shower in the DPW lot, great, so they don't go home, and then their respective spouses aren't yelling them in what you're bringing back home. I get that. It's not that I'm against that. What I was just asking is, it's just a very broad $1 million without any determination, and we're just asking, at least I was, for a little bit more specifics in the, in the description and line items.
Yeah, and I'm not suggesting that you were suggesting that you didn't want to do this project. I hear what you're saying, and the $1 million was kind of pulled out of the air. It's just, okay, you got a price for $750,000. I know it's going to come in higher than that. I have no idea what it's going to be. Let's ask for a million. There'll probably be something left over. There's lots more to do in this building than just the exterior. It's not like we're going to have this excess money lying around. It will be used for the balance of the interior work. But again, I'm not, if you just would rather fund the exterior piece of this, you could cut this back. I would say we need a cushion on this estimate, so you cut it back by 100 or 150. We should have enough to do the exterior work, and then we'll design the interior, figure out what we need in there, and come back to you with more detail for any interior work in either FY24, the FY24 proposal, or if we're not ready, in a subsequent year.
I saw that Counselor Brown had a question. Anyone else after that?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I have a question regarding the last installment. You said that it was just the roof. Was there other expenditures out of the money that was granted last year?
I believe we just spent it on the roof, but I don't have the, I don't...
Do you have the amount, how much the roof was?
Okay, all right. I don't know what the roof bid came in off the top of my head, but I can get back to you on that.
Was there any additional expenditures out of that money that we used other, because you only spoke of the roof, and the reason why I speak of David's cause, Roy took some of the questions that I had. We want to see a breakdown with the money that we allotted last year. You speaking of the roof, is that all that was used, and if so, is there any surplus left from that amount?
Yeah, I don't know.
I mean, I think what I would say is, our auditing department is pretty rigorous in terms of making sure that we're not spending funds on things that weren't, weren't approved or was a part of appropriation.
But we're not saying that. We're not saying that. What we're saying is that we're approving money, and we just, it's easier for a lot of the new counselors to understand, and I'm looking at some of the other pages where you have all the ideas, but there's nothing what says this is what the cost is, this is where it's going, this is line A, B, and C, and we're just giving figures. So I just trying to really also bring my younger counselors in.
So what I would, what I would say, the larger answer here is that we make reasonable estimates. When we overshoot, obviously, we need to get that money. The money either goes back to whatever funding source it came from, or we find a way to have that money approved to move to the next. So like, if it's, if it's roads or a water and sewer job, it gets, we have to get approval to move it to the next job because there's always more to do.
So once that's approved to go to the next job, in the event that it happens?
Only with city council approval. Like, we can't just add it to the, that money has to go back and be appropriated properly. And I think, I think that's what we've, we've been doing since I've been here, that's really what we've been doing, and we're actually working with auditing to try to always identify where money is left over so we can close a project out and move it on to the next project. Again, there's no mystery to it. Whatever's, whatever remains, obviously, we have to have a valid use for that money.
Yeah, let me just put a finer point on that. So always, when you approve a CIP for something like the roof, we can only spend that money on the roof.
Right.
So when that project is closed out and the final accounting is done, the auditor's office will tell us what's left over. We will then say, okay, great, we want to spend that on the doors. The auditor will say, oh, no. You, you have this money left over. We need to go to the council and get approval to transfer. And so you often see requests to you, transfer money from this capital account that has a surplus into this new account. We're always required to come to the council. So I, what I can't answer is what's left in that roof account yet? The auditor probably hasn't finished a final accounting on that project yet. I can try to get a ballpark as to where we are and get back to the council on that. But whatever the case would be, if there's, say, $100,000 left on that.
Right.
We can't just spend that on another portion of this project. We would have to come back to the council and say, we have a surplus in this roof project. We would like to transfer it to the DPW in order to do the, add to the overhead doors or do interior work.
Well, not putting words in my counselor's mouth. I think the question he asks is that if we give you a million and you only spend $750,000, who authorized the next spending? And you had, you didn't clearly state that.
Yeah, you, you always, this council always has authorization on expenditures. When you approve money for a particular project, I can only spend on a different project if I come back to the council for a transfer. And we do that quite often. You see that a lot. In fact, you're going to see some of that coming up in the spring because we have some surpluses left over in some other projects where we want to transfer it to the school department for use at their new building on Webster Avenue. So you do see that quite a bit.
Thank you.
Counselor Robinson? A quick question. In regards to the doors, are they regular doors? Are there oversized doors or specialty doors that the city's going to have to have measured up and ordered by a specialty company?
It's replacement of the existing dimension doors. I believe the new door style, all the newer doors are lighter weight. They're a little bit more resilient than the older style, which is what is being replaced. I don't know whether or not it was a standard size. This building, I believe this building goes back to the '60s, and so I'm not sure if that was like a standard size. I'm assuming that if it's reasonably close, they can fur them out, so there are ways to make it so that they're not custom-sized. They are all overhead doors. These aren't like doors that you walk in and out of a room. These are all like truck bay doors, and some smaller regular doors as well.
Well, so I was going to say, we got, you know, trucks going in and out, so we're going, I'm sure the room has to be wide enough on each side for the vehicle to be able to enter and exit without damaging the door on their way out.
Absolutely, absolutely, absolutely.
All right, that was my question. Thanks. So moving on, I see that the next part is the final design, number three, final design for attic expansion?
Yes, so this is something I'm really interested in doing, which is renovating the attic upstairs so that we can get more office space here in City Hall. We are in desperate need of office space. Everyone's cramped, everyone, every office is out of room, and we have lots of space needs here, and they're only going to grow in the future. And as, you know, we did the tower project, which was a necessary first step to stop all the water leaking up there, but as those of you who went up there to see, there's a lot of space upstairs. That attic has a lot of room and should be able to be renovated very nicely into some really nice, modern office space. And so that's what I propose to do. This is a proposed cost expenditure to do the architectural work. The $300,000 is a best guess estimate as to what architectural work will cost, sort of based on the architectural cost of renovating the E911 building. So we got a price for that architect. We went out to bid for that. We have a price for that. It's right around $300,000. We think, talking to that architect, not that they're going to get the winning bid, but that this will be about the same scope, and so we estimate that with $300,000, we can get close to final architectural design work for upstairs, which we can then put out to bid. So that's, that's the goal of this particular proposal, is to get money to do a final design for office space upstairs.
Is there any, as of yet, any suggested or planned department that would go into that, or is it, are these staff not decided yet of who and what?
We haven't got that far. You know, I think IT is clearly out of space. There's a few other offices that are out of space. Obviously, our goal would be to move offices up there that don't have a lot of public interaction, but it will be absolutely publicly accessible, will have to be publicly accessible space, but we would want offices up there that don't interact as often with the public. IT is a good example of that. So, but the direct answer to your question is no. We haven't got that far in any thinking.
Obviously, there's elevator service to that building, but when we talk about stairs, I don't think the stairs portion is, would pass go.
It isn't, and that will take some tough decision-making about the stairs. You know, there are a couple of options up here. One is to kind of blow through Ned's office. The other is to blow through your nice council chamber, conference room, and replicate it upstairs, but those are decisions that haven't been made yet. We want to talk through with the architect what makes sense, what's more costly. So, you know, there aren't a whole lot of options. I probably gave you the two that exist, but, you know, those are decisions that will have to be made in the next.
And not adding another layer of stairs similar to what we have here, doesn't make sense either?
Unclear. I don't think so, but unclear. I think these are all decisions that will, an architect will help us figure out.
Okay. Any questions on this? None? All right, moving on, we have the public building renovations.
So this is, again, this is just sort of a place, I can't tell you what, this is a million dollars, to do all sorts of office renovation work. We do, a lot of our buildings are old, offices are old. We still need to, just in this building alone, renovate the assessors area and that new payroll area. We did some real minor changes there, but all in-house. It's not the final design. We've renovated some offices in this building that have come out very nicely, the clerks, the treasurer, the auditor, but there are still some old offices downstairs that need to be renovated. So this is money to do that. I don't have a breakdown for... So this is money to do that. I don't have a breakdown for you because we just sort of go office by office here. But we always, we always spend this money and then don't even have enough left by the time we get to, you know, April. So it's really just a placeholder. We've been asking for a million dollars a year for the past few years. This is another request for that. There's no question we will spend this on office renovations, whether it's some of the firehouses, whether it's, you know, something that needs to be done, the police station, who knows? But all of our buildings need some work in one sense or another, and this is the money to do that with.
I add the, as I said to you privately, and now I'll say it publicly, the replacement of the windows in City Hall.
Oh, yes.
chambers, so that we can get rid of all the rotting wood that are outside and make this room a lot quieter than it currently is.
So I have to have a free cash request coming to you for that work. Among some other work I want to do in the spring because the money you gave me in the CIP is gone. We've spent it all for public building renovations, but I'd like to do some work in the spring. I have a request coming to you next week, a bunch of requests from free cash. One of them is some money for public building renovations and including in that is money for the windows in this building. Now, the reality is we will have to go out to bid and probably that work wouldn't get done till the summer. But it'll be quicker than waiting for, you know, I'd like to have that done for when you return in September. And if it's in the CIP, it will not happen. So I've, I accelerated that request and it'll be in the free cash, uh, request that you see next week.
Okay. Uh, we'll move on to the boiler replacement at Chelsea High School?
Yes, so this is a school department project. This is proposed to be paid out of ARPA. It is the replacement of boilers at the Chelsea High School. And there are a bunch of other school department projects that you'll see in here, all of which, for the most part, I'm proposing to pay out of ARPA.
I'm gonna read off a few. If there's anything that any of my colleagues want to ask about, just feel free to raise your hand or just make a sound so I can recognize you. But I think we'll just skip through some of these. They're self-explanatory and more, um, descriptive just by the nature. Is the digital archive preservation, that's a one hundred thousand dollars. The purchase of a DBW asphalt truck for a hundred and eighty thousand dollars to go around and take care of all our potholes in the springtime. We have a Ford F-50, five fifty dump truck with a plow and sander also for the Department of Public Works. That's a ninety-five thousand dollar expenditure. We have a Ford Transit XL Buildings and Grounds, thirty-three thousand dollars. We have a microgrid and energy resilience and that is...
So I'd like to just explain that a little bit. Alex may want to come up. But this is a project that we've been working on for several years. It's in, it's sort of a climate resiliency effort. It's to do some solar panels and installation of batteries to sort of make City Hall, Police Station, DPW self-sufficient and energy resilient. And we got a significant grant from, we got several significant grants that totaled about a million dollars. But this is the city's share of this project, uh, requires an appropriation of five hundred thousand dollars. So I'll let Alex speak a little bit more about this because I know this is a project that his office and the Office of Resilience and Sustainability is really keen on.
Good evening, everyone. So the microgrid project represents one of our major energy resilience initiatives. So the overarching goal of the project is to promote clean energy and to provide resilience in City Hall and emergency response operations. So kind of the premise of the project is that during power outages, City Hall, nine-one-one, and our critical operations will be able to operate even after the power goes out. So right now, many facilities, like local government buildings, are usually operated through emergency generators that are run by diesel. This system looks to install a battery system outside of City Hall that during power outages could supply power to City Hall and nine-one-one for four to six hours. This is really the first step of this project, one of which we see kind of building over years to come, where eventually through a resident-led committee, we envision that this project would serve residential customers in the long run through future battery installation. But for now, this five hundred thousand dollars represents the city's investment in the first step supplementing the approximately one point two million dollars in grant funds that we've secured to date.
Questions? Counselor Taylor?
Does this, does this project represent any savings to the city?
That's a great question. So as the first step of the project before we start the design and engineering process, we're going to undertake an investment-grade audit, which is when we hire an energy consultant. They do an inspection of the city building, the E nine-one-one facility, and all of the other city facilities, like the school department buildings. And they identify cost savings that could be realized through energy efficiency measures. So the goal ultimately is to achieve cost savings. This energy audit will quantify those savings. But we will not be opting to implement anything with long payback periods as part of this. So we want to either experience a net reduction or have a net neutral effect when it comes to cost.
Okay. It, so that's what, that's what the plan is. But do we, do you have any, I mean, when you were, when you were putting together the project, is, is some of this baked in originally or you're just gonna, kind of get it off the ground and then see where we are?
So under the, the Green Communities Program, which is what we're operating under, we have to prove that this project can at least pay for itself over this twenty-year period. So that's kind of the baseline. What I think we're aiming for is additional cost savings above and beyond that initial investment, which we'll know once we do the audit.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you.
Any other questions? No? Okay. We'll move on. We have the continuation of the municipal water meter replacement, and that's in the amount of three hundred thousand dollars. We have a desktop replacement IT at twenty-five. The licensure for Microsoft Office is at sixty. We have public safety tough books for the Chelsea Police Department, that's thirty thousand dollars. The SAN storage expansion IT is fifty thousand dollars. Server replacement, eighty thousand dollars. We have the, uh, library computer and furniture upgrades at ten thousand dollars. And now we have Highland Park improvements of two point five million dollars, and that is ARPA money?
Yeah, I, if I could, this is a major, one of the major open space projects we're preparing to do. As many of you know, that Visit Highland Park, that turf is very old, it's worn out. And so this is a complete replacement of the turf, replacement of, uh, the bleachers, goalposts, upgrading the controls on the lighting there, major complete renovation of that, uh, heavily utilized field. And so we will be doing that with this money. And again, it's funded, it's proposed to be funded through ARPA.
Any questions? Counselor Robinson?
Have you looked at any designs for the park yet?
I don't know the answer to that.
It's too early, I think. It takes a little while before they go to design period.
Um, so the design phase is gonna cost approximately seventy-five thousand dollars, and that funding's included in this line item before you, so we can't start design until funding's approved. We have taken a preliminary look and assessment of it, and we've noted that, you know, full turf replacement, drainage, subsurface improvements, and lighting and bleacher upgrades are necessary. But we have to wrangle that full scope once we start the design.
And you said that the, the lighting is gonna go to automatic and not lo, no longer to, uh, manual turning on and off? Is that correct?
That's correct. So we'll either implement a photocell, which allows the lighting to go on and off as the sun rises or the sun sets, or we'll implement a, a timing system. When we upgrade lighting at athletic fields, the controller that we install has both options. So it'll depend on the, the users ultimately. But yes, it'll be fully automated and remote controlled as well.
Counselor Lopez?
Yes, my question is, uh, those two million, five hundred dollars, is that the, the share that the city is putting in for? Or are we getting a grant from parks from the state?
We're not getting a grant, we don't anticipate any grant for this particular park. The next park project is the one that we get the annual grant for, and I'll talk about that in a moment. But for this, no, we're prepared to pay for this entirely ourselves and we'll do it with ARPA money.
Thank you. If, uh, councilors want to look on this per, on this, um, this booklet, if you have it, at the top, it tells you where the, the money is coming from. It'll state miscellaneous grant, school stabilization, MWR grant money, general stabilization. Chapter ninety, ARPA funding is the blue. And then you have enterprise funding, general fund borrowing, water and fund borrowing, and then sewer fund. So typically, the number will go underneath that category to help identify where the funding source is coming from. Counselor DeJesus?
Yeah, my question is just regarding the neighborhood around the park. Is there community input for the design and when would that start?
Typically later on.
So there will be. We imagine that it'll start in earnest around August and trail into the fall. So we're planning to meet with the Boys and Girls Club, uh, the mosque across the street, a lot of the residents in the neighborhood, as well as in the Innis Apartments, as, and continue meetings with some of the leagues and the users. We've had a few meetings so far with Recreation and Cultural Affairs and some of the leagues, so we understand some of their sort of athletic needs. But this summer is when we'll really delve into the resident meetings with the neighborhood.
Thank you.
Our next item is the annual park project with a total of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I believe that's Quigley?
So, no, this'll be for next year's project, which is like, was going to be Bossen.
Bossen.
Quigley, were you funded last year? We're in the process of, uh, design, doing that work. And that work will be done by next June thirtieth?
Right, so we're going to be applying for a park grant, uh, this July for the renovation of Bossen Park. So if we're successful in that endeavor, we would obtain the grant this calendar year. We would have to have design finished by June thirtieth, twenty-three, and then the renovation completed by June thirtieth, twenty-four.
So you're always funding sort of the next year's project. Quigley's already funded and moving forward. This is the next park, which I think we had discussion about what it would be, is going to be Bossen. Bossen is a, just as a heads up, and sometimes we've done this when the price of the park has come in higher than what we put in, we've come in for a supplemental appropriation. That may be the case with Bossen because there's some, that, there's a retaining wall there, there's some unique features of that park that could make it expensive to renovate. So it's possible Bossen will require a supplemental appropriation. But for the moment, we're looking for the typical appropriation, which is three hundred and fifty thousand from free cash with a four hundred thousand dollar grant from the state. The next one is Garden Cemetery. This is a multi-phased project. We've done, I think, three phases of this so far. It's come out quite nicely, but there's a lot more work to do in that park. We do have a mo, a lot, a plan that is available online showing you like a seven-year plan. It needs to be updated, and I think we're, Alex could maybe talk a minute about that because we probably do need to update that plan with more, uh, current pricing and, uh, more current phasing.
So the original Garden Cemetery master plan chronicled a six-year restoration scheme for the cemetery. As Tom indicated, we are in the process right now of updating the pricing and the phasing. This past phase, phase two, we did opt to consolidate some of phase three into it, meaning that we're operating a little bit ahead of schedule right now. But this summer, we'll begin construction on the third phase. That'll involve the replacement of five interior crypts, uh, stone dust walkways, landscaping, as well as a hundred monuments and grave markers. This phase four, that's in the CIP, will continue that work by finishing up the interior pathways, upgrading some additional landscaping and restoring approximately a hundred additional monuments and gravestones. We likely have another phase after this, and it's going to be this somewhat sort of phase of miscellaneous where we'll tackle the remaining monuments and gravestones, um, some additional tree planting, and some grading work that has to occur. But we are, you know, hopefully nearing the end of this over the next three years. Our goal is to, you know, have this open to the public in time for, you know, twenty-twenty-four, uh, calendar year.
We're moving on to the, I'm sorry, Counsel Brown?
So I see this is under the miscellaneous grant column, so all of these are coming from a miscellaneous grant or?
So for Garden Cemetery, we're proposing, uh, four hundred thousand dollars out of free cash. And then a hundred thousand dollars will be applying for, from the Secretary of State's Historic Facilities Fund. And that application is actually due this Friday, and that will cover the gravestone restoration.
So since I'm just asking this, because what caught my eye was the way it was lined up. So the additionals, this lined up, like some in free cash and miscellaneous, is that's where it falls at? There are appropriations?
So this is proposed to take five hundred thou-
Correct.
Five hundred thousand will come from free cash, with the hope is that we'll get this other hundred thousand dollars from this grant. The total to be expended is six hundred thousand.
Okay, I can read that. Okay.
And I would just add one more, uh, one more detail where the, in some of these other ones, you'll see like, for instance, the, the annual park project, uh, that says that our grant will be four hundred thousand. Most of these are the maximum amount we can obtain from those grant sources. So we try to max those out before we turn to the city for, uh, for funding.
So under the annual, but, okay. That's number nineteen, the one above it, right?
So twenty-one?
Oh, no, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. So it's coming from the grants and free cash, so it's seven hundred and fifty thousand, correct?
No, the Garden Cemetery-
No, no, not that one, the one he's speaking on now, the annual park project?
Yes.
Okay.
Seven hundred and fifty thousand. But as I said, Bossen has me a little concerned that it's gonna exceed seven hundred and fifty thousand. We've typically put seven hundred and fifty thousand aside for all of our parks. But Bossen, with these unique features, could be a little more. But as in the past, when that has happened, I've usually come to the council at a later date looking for a supplemental appropriation. I don't know if that's gonna be required. It's possible that Bossen will come in within this budget, but I'm just giving you a sort of heads up that that park has some challenges to it.
Because the, um, grant will provide four hundred thousand in fund reimbursed up to seventy percent of the project, correct?
That's all the po, every park, I forget what the acronym stands for, P-A-R-C. Every one of those grants is the same. It's up to four hundred thousand dollars.
Max.
Uh, maximum, yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Send to the mic, please.
Is, these grants are coming from the state, correct?
That park grant is a state grant, yes.
And if we need supplemental money, is that when we use local funding? We want to first reach out to our state resources, right? I'm just thinking about CPA and how the parks and recreation portion of that.
So we'll max out the state grant at four hundred thousand, and then all the other money will come from the city. We, we, on all of these annual, we do a park every single year, and all of these ones, we typically have funded in the same exact way. We get the four hundred thousand dollar maximum state grant, and we put three hundred and fifty thousand in of free cash. Now, if the project exceeds that amount, you have identified a potential funding source beyond more free cash, which is CPA. We might turn to them and ask them for money since this is open space. So that's an option certainly for the city, is to go to the CPA and ask them for some open space money for a park, to cover the difference.
Thank you.
So our next item on the, is the historic staircase rehab along in Powderhorn Hill?
Yes, so some of you have been involved so far in the design discussions. You, the council provided us with design money for these- You, the council provided us with design money for these staircases last year, in the last year's CIP. We've been spending that money, we've been involved in the design process that engage, has engaged the public. Some city councils, I know, have been involved. And, uh, we will finalize that design work, uh, this spring, and this is the money to actually construct the three staircases that we're proposing to do. Alex may have some more to-
Can you identify those three if I'm, uh, so I can be, is, for public record?
Absolutely, so the three staircases will consist of the stairs between Franklin and Lafayette, uh, the stairs between Broadway and Clark Ave, and then there's a small staircase at the corner of Forsyth, Sturgis, and Gardner. Um, that includes a small staircase and kind of this triangular parcel. Uh, so we're thinking that may also be a good candidate for CPA funding, depending on what the neighborhood wants to see there, whether it's something passive or, or a green area. Um, this is another sort of item that I, that I will call out. You know, we are trying to strike the most cost-effective approach here. Um, so by the end of the spring, uh, in the May timeframe, we should have a, you know, detailed kind of construction approach, uh, to these staircases, and be able to then determine sort of what our request, if any, to the CPA is for that smaller triangular site.
And what are those, uh, what is the, um, requested amount, the $600,000 going to cover? You, it, can you break it down? I think I saw something in the description, lighting, rehab of the stairs, um, artistic, well, I couldn't remember. So if you could just explain a little bit about what that all entails.
Absolutely, so the, the $600,000 will cover the restoration of the existing staircases. So that'll include new, you know, poured-in-place concrete, uh, hand railing, lighting fixtures where appropriate. Uh, there are also a butters relatively close proximity to some of the staircases. You know, the butters in certain locations have fences that are falling down and/or impeding passage, so we may seek to replace fencing with this funding. And then anything we do have left over at the end, we propose for landscaping, public art, and those aesthetic enhancements.
Would it, uh, would, can we expect that the final product may end up looking, uh, upgraded in something along the lines of what we see between, um, I think is Highland and Grove? Something along those lines?
I think you'll end up seeing something that's, that's a little bit more modern than that, um, because we're looking at different materials here for hand railing, for the concrete itself. Um, but I would say that's a good sort of benchmark as a minimum of what these upgraded stairs would look like.
And we expect the finish to be when?
Uh, so we're aiming to have the sort of final design in draft form by May. Um, we'll socialize that with the neighborhood, incorporate any remaining feedback, tie that up in June, so we'll be ready to bid this out upon the approval of funding.
Councillor Lopez, then councillor Robinson.
My question would be, uh, are we thinking about adding some cameras on those stairs? Because I know that there have been some complaints before about illegal activities.
That's a good question. We actually received a similar question at our, our last community meeting. We are looking to install cameras, um, at the entrances to the staircases. And for instance, at one of them, there's a utility pole that overlooks the stairs where we could mount a camera. Um, and in any place that we have a blind spot, we'll, we'll look to add a camera in coordination with the police department.
Thank you. It would be nice, I think, to, to have some cameras, but I know there was a complaint before, and, and the minute that I was, and they were complaining about some illegal activities, so that's why I was just saying that. Thank you.
Yeah.
Councillor Robinson.
Is there any reason why we're, we're not including the stairs that go from Washington Avenue by Commo Street? That go up to, um?
So, excuse me, so right now, our main limitation is quite honestly funding. You know, we looked at all of the stairs on Powderhorn Hill, kind of sorted that list by ownership and by condition, selected the, the three kind of worst candidates, um, and then tried to set out on a design process within sort of the, the budget we were allotted. There are definitely additional staircases on Powderhorn Hill that are, some of them are, are city-owned. Um, some of them are also state-owned. For instance, there's one at the end of John Street up to the Soldiers' Home. We'll look to, um, work with the state on. Um, but that small staircase you're, you're referencing, the only thing that's preventing us right now from tackling that is, is a lack of funding.
No, I just had a lot of people get off the bus there, and it would be for convenience to be able to go up the stairs to get to the streets above.
Absolutely, and we've had a few folks in the neighborhood reach out to us about it as well.
Yeah, thanks.
We'll move on to, I think, uh, Alex will stay around to explain the-
Yeah, I'm gonna ask Alex, he's next to her right now, it's his wheelhouse, so he can handle those two.
Mill Creek Resilience, Resilience Planning and Design, and then Urban Heat Mitigation. The first one was for a total of $260,000, and the, uh, heat mitigation is 430, 437,500.
Great, so the first one pertains to our large, multi-year restoration and flood protection project along Mill Creek. Uh, the neighborhoods surrounding Mill Creek on Clinton Street, as well as Parkside Plaza, are low-lying areas susceptible to flooding. Moreover, Mill Creek was rated an F rating. It's the most contaminated water body in the Mystic River watershed area. So a lot of our efforts, in addition to safeguarding the neighborhoods from flooding, center on improving water quality. And there are a couple of different reasons why water quality is so poor in this area. Um, right now, with a state grant, we're setting out on that water quality assessment, which is kind of the first phase. Um, this funding that's proposed in FY '23 will advance the design and engineering of green infrastructure and gray infrastructure to reduce flood risk and improve water quality. Um, I do also want to note some positive news. We received word on Friday afternoon from Senator Markey's office that the senator was successful in obtaining an $800,000 earmark for the city as part of the federal budget for the Mill Creek Restoration Program. Um, so we are, you know, excited to scale the program up, uh, with our partners and, and the surrounding neighborhood.
Excellent. I was going to ask you, the recent news of the Napalet River, uh, being cited as a superfund now, what are the chances at some point, if you talk about contamination, that is equal to or with, uh, that, or to that level of Mill Creek? But I think that it being an active, uh, port would be probably very difficult to want to designate that anything, because you still have the vessels, commercial vessels going in and out.
Exactly, and with, with the Napalet River, there's like that factory in Hyde Park, for instance, which is extremely, extremely contaminated. A lot of the old industrial along the banks of Mill Creek has been slowly redeveloped and remediated. Right now, a lot of the contamination is due to, uh, sewage overflows, as well as some, some site contamination and runoff from the Route 16 and Route 1, uh, sort of surface roads that Mass DOT oversee. Um, but for, for Chelsea Creek, you know, that, that could be a possibility, particularly with the new administration in office.
Can you go on to the urban heat mitigation and the expenditure, 437,500? What does that entail?
Absolutely, so this again is building off of a pilot project that we're overseeing currently. So the goal with this project is to design and institute infrastructure in dense neighborhoods that are combined of, of heat islands. So last year, during the pandemic, in partnership with the BU School of Public Health and Green Roots, we modeled and mapped out all of the hotspots throughout the city through remote sensors. So we understand now where the hottest areas of the city are, and during the daytime hours and, and nighttime hours. So we're targeting these areas with infrastructure inventions. Uh, the first one we're rolling out this spring, down on Willow Street, with a combination of tree planting, the installation of light-colored surfaces, and the installation of a white roof on the Boys and Girls Club. That's being grant-funded out of a current state grant. The funding that's proposed in FY '23 is to expand that effort and to select another location in either the Shertlift-Bellingham or Addison-Orange neighborhood, uh, to implement a similar treatment. So we're thinking green space, enhancing tree planting, light-colored asphalt and pavement, water features, and, and white roofs as the effective measures. So the proposed 87,500 would be a local match to a municipal vulnerability preparedness grant. We expect that we can secure around $350,000 through that grant program for the project.
And what is, and what, uh, how is the grant money used? Are you saying it's the purchase of, uh, to convert these sites, buy trees? What are we looking at? How is that money spent?
So usually the, the funding is spent at the first sort of phase on design and engineering services. And then once we have the project designed and engineered, we'll procure a construction contractor. So the funding goes for construction services, the cost of equipment, like trees, spray features, as well as the cost of supplies and, and installation. So for instance, with the Boys and Girls Club roof, we're purchasing this white roof product, um, that's applied to the, the top layer of the roof, so the grant funding would go to those products and the labor to, to install them. Um, all of these are prevailing wage rate, uh, jobs, so we do factor those wage rates in, into the cost estimate. It makes it a little more expensive, obviously, but it ensures people are, are paid a living wage. Um, outside of this, we'll also look to enhance visibility and complete public education when it comes to extreme heat and climate issues. So a small percentage of this funding would go towards those public education efforts.
Do you foresee the availability of this white roof towards, uh, some sort of subsidization to, uh, the owners of, because we have many of them, of the three families that are all flat-top? And then say, uh, when they go out, it's, rubber roofing right now is the, the, the black is the only option for many of the homeowners because of the cost and the availability, uh, to many of the local roofers who are working. Um, do you foresee a program where, um, something could be worked with owner-occupied three families to change them and also be participating in this program?
Absolutely, I think a program like that would be directly aligned with what we're trying to achieve, which is reducing extreme temperatures in, in dense neighborhoods. Um, so we have conceptually outlined a residential program. Um, that would include assisting owner-occupied properties with the, the cost differential between the white roof and the black roof. Again, right now, it's, it's a funding issue. Um, we could pursue state grants, however, most state grants are not always open to using funding for private properties. There has to be that public nexus. And so some communities, like the city of Baltimore is a good example, have done this at the residential level with, with local funding, um, on both three families, as well as larger, multifamily housing stock.
Any questions? Uh, councillor De Jesus.
I know you mentioned, um, prevailing wage, and I wanted to see, is there any way that you're working with, um, workforce development in the city in order to hire locally some of our local workers and families that are looking to get back into landscaping or, or whatever the project entails?
Totally, so for all of our projects, whether it's construction or some type of professional services, we try to market the bids widely to local vendors. Um, that includes, you know, alerting vendors to the bid, holding pre-bid meetings to answer questions and assist them with the process. When it comes to kind of the construction trades, we have, for most of our federally funded programs, something called a Section 3 requirement. And in essence, that requirement states that if there are any new jobs created as a result of the project, like a contractor wins the bid and has to hire 10 new laborers to assist with the work, that they create and abide by a local hiring plan that includes taking on apprentices from local workforce organizations, working closely with places like Mass Hire, um, to recruit folks, and doing sort of round outreach in, in neighborhoods.
Room for youth, um, um, possible work for youth in the city?
Um, it gets kind of tricky on public construction jobs from a legal perspective. Um, I'm happy to research that a little further with our legal team. Um, but there are very stringent requirements we have to follow when it comes to whether they're classified as an apprentice or a full-time employee. And anything kind of below that usually isn't doable, at least on public construction. Um, for things like maintenance and operations, there's a little bit more wiggle room. Um, but I'm happy to follow up with you.
Thank you.
Seeing all the questions, we'll move on, and we have the Williams School Playground, council, I'm sorry, city manager, Tom Ambrosino.
So this is the major renovation of that, uh, concrete, uh, asphalt playground area in front of the Williams School. School Department's been designing this for a while. They have actually quite a nice proposal, and this will pay for the complete renovation. They are looking to start that work this summer, so they are, in the hopes that the council's sort of going, going to give tonight, not raise any major objection to it. I think they're planning to try to go out to bid, uh, for this work in the spring, uh, in it, in the expectation that money will become available. Uh, it's ARPA-funded, so it means it's quicker, uh, to get this money available. So, uh, that's that project.
Councillor Robinson.
Uh, just a quick question, when you're dealing with the people that are going to design the park, and you want kids to use the park, fiberglass backboards and collapsible rims? Because if you don't put up collapsible rims, you'll be replacing the rims every three weeks by kids hanging on the rim. So you want to get a collapsible rim.
So that sounds like great advice to me. I, I, we haven't, you know, this is a school department project, we've left it to them to pursue, but I'll certainly pass that along to them.
Or you could put it up another foot higher. Councillor Lopez.
I have a question regarding, uh, I see kids playing at night there in the summer, in the dark. And I think I, I emailed you, and I emailed, uh, the previous superintendent. Are we gonna have like time limit so the kids can play at night? Because I see them at 10 o'clock or 9 o'clock playing basketball, uh, on the dark day, in, in Williams School.
Yeah, I think that's just a, working on an accommodation with the school department, because they're in control of that area and the lights there, so, um, but I would expect if that's a request, they can accommodate it, uh, once the renovations are complete. Seems like a fair request to me.
Yeah, because like I said, again, uh-
I'll make a note of both of these things and bring them to the attention of Monica, the superintendent.
Regarding that, and, and, uh, sometimes I, I go by there, 8 o'clock, it's dark. And then the kids are playing late, they don't, it is hot, they don't want to be inside the apartment, so they want to be playing. And then the lights are on, because whoever's turned the lights on or off is going home at 9 o'clock, or before 9 o'clock, they shut it off. So I'll, I'll be, you know-
I will pass that along to them tomorrow.
We're moving on to the next page, we have roadway safety enhancements, $300,000.
So this is a request from Free Cash for some specific roadway enhancements, mostly ones that have come before the Traffic Commission at councillor's request, been approved by the Traffic Commission, and now just requires some investment. So a lot of this is speed bumps, uh, enhanced crosswalks, bump outs. And so we have a couple that have already been approved by both the Traffic Commission and this city council, specifically Washington Avenue and Marlborough Street. And so this funding will allow this work to get started over the course of this construction season.
We have then camera replacement and additions, $50,000.
Yeah, so this is just, we do every year, we do some camera replacements. We usually put a Free Cash request in for 50, the mock cruises-
How many is that for 248? I didn't look, is it, looks like four, maybe?
I think-
About $65,000 apiece, something like that for a marked cruiser.
I can answer that question, I think, in a moment. Yes, four mock cruises at 62,000 apiece.
Portable radios, $105,000, I mean, we're taking, uh, replacing almost all of them, I guess?
It's just a standard annual effort to replace a certain number each year.
Our marked cruiser at $50,000. Um, I, I'm sorry, island and river barrier permitting, can you explain that one?
Yeah, so this is the major island and river project that we have been working on since I arrived here. Uh, this is a $70 million project, when all is said and done, that involves major coastal resiliency work, both in Chelsea and Everett. The Chelsea design is quite far along. This is sort of a, uh, uh, final payment to get the permitting completed, uh, of $100,000. We are now in the midst of seeking large infusions of federal funding for this project. This project has a lot of state support behind it. We have a large request into FEMA through their BRIC program, uh, and we're doing this in collaboration with the city of Everett. So this- So, this specific appropriation is to just allow us to complete the permitting aspect of this project during the course of fiscal year '23.
We then have the C1 replacement staff car, $50,000. We have the replacement of the tower ladder number one at 1.5. I think we're at the 12-year mark on that one, on that ladder, replacing it?
Yeah, so when I, one of the things I committed to the fire department when I arrived here was that we would have a, a plan for the replacement of all of their vehicles. And we've been replacing vehicles each and every year that I've been here. This is, so even that this, this staff car is part of that replacement plan. This was supposed to happen last year. We kicked it over for a year. This tower replacement is the last remaining major piece of equipment that hasn't been replaced in the time I've been here. So, this really will give them a very much up-to-date fleet there at the fire department. And I'm proposing that that expenditure come out of general stabilization. It's the only expenditure I'm proposing to come out of stabilization.
The next one is a major, I mean, major expenditure. It is the renovation of E911 operation that is at $3 million using Opera money.
Yeah, so this is the complete rehabilitation of the building next door, the E911 building. Once we made the decision a couple of years ago that we weren't going to be part of a regional effort with the Revere and Winthrop and any others, we knew we had to find, we had to do something with E911. We explored renting space. But at the end of the day, decided after a lot of discussion that this was the best approach, which is just fully renovate that building. And so, we have an architect onboard that's under design contract right now. This is an estimate only of what the price will be, but architect feels this is in the ballpark. Of course, we won't know until we go out to bid, which will be sometime in fiscal year '23. But we're hopeful that this will cover the cost of that full renovation. It will, it will, it will create more space in there, the way it's going to be designed, so that they can expand their operations and potentially bring on an entity like an Everett if they ever wanted to regionalize with us and come over to our location. But it will, it will certainly meet the future needs of E911 for the city of Chelsea for the foreseeable future.
Tom, my only concern is, and I did spend some time with the 911 director, is that when I look at the building, it is a basically 600 square feet building on each, on a level. That's two levels. That's about 1,200 square feet. And when I break it down, the cost comes down to $1,250 per square foot to renovate, which being a little bit knowledgeable of the renovation cost, construction cost seems rather high. My question again is, you know, if there's a way to break it down and figure out how they arranged, they came up to that number. I understand there may be some cost of equipment and such, but even still, it just seems that, you know, $1,250 per square foot on a renovation when we're building, and I get it, even, even the numbers, I think, at the FBI building were around 1,000 square foot. Granted, it was a, you know, ground up. In this case, we're not building a new building, we're just simply renovating the inside. So, I have to ask, you know, can we have a better understanding of how that number was arrived at so that we just, at least I personally will feel a little bit more comfortable in allotting that high of a number?
Yeah, I don't, I'd have to ask the architects to give us a better estimate. This is really a back-of-the-envelope estimate from them. And so, they probably won't be able to, they just have started their design work. So, they probably won't be able to do that for a few more, maybe, I don't know what their schedule is like. We just got them started. So, I should be able to give you a better sense of that in a few months as to what our actual cost of that renovation would be once their design gets a little further along. This is kind of another one of these placeholders, but I have to have money in there. If, if I don't have any money in the CIP, I can't really go out to bid in FY '23. So, it means I wait till FY '24, and there, we're really strapped over there. But let me see what I can do in terms of getting from the architect some better estimate. I don't think Lou has been involved enough in this, but do you have anything to, oh, Kate? Go ahead, Kate. You know, way more about it than I do.
You mentioned that it's just an interior renovation, but in fact, there's major exterior and roof repairs. The director may have shown you some of the leaking issues they've had. So, so part of that cost is a significant roof replacement as well as waterproofing in the walls. The FBI building, built up from scratch, was built to code. This is a 1930s building, and so, doing a renovation of this size also requires us to address a lot of ADA compliance issues. So, there's some complicated design to make it accessible for people with limited mobility. So, those add to the costs.
Okay. Are the other costs of the temporary trailer involved in here and also being covered? Is that, or is that something else? Because you, you will have a temporary trailer parked along City Hall Ave. So, I'm questioning whether or not that cost is also being borne in this whole thing?
The cost of how to keep the dispatch center operational during construction was included in the rough estimate. But again, as we get the final design and go out to bid, we'll, we'll know what those true costs look like. But that has been considered.
Thank you. Any questions? No? So, the next item on the list here is we have, let me just catch myself here.
So, this is our roadway program.
So, Chapter 90 roadway sidewalk improvements.
So, we try to do about a million and a half dollars worth of roadway work each year. We get about $600,000 from Chapter 90, and then, we put in the rest. So, there's $800,000 in free cash in here. There's about $200,000 that's always in our operating budget. It adds up to about 1.5 million that we would like to spend each year on roadway work so we can have a pretty robust program once, once the warm weather arrives. So, this would be a request. The 596 will come to us in Chapter 90, and the $800,000 is the additional Free Cash request to enhance the program.
We have green infrastructure, Lower Broadway, total of $70,000 enterprise funding. So, I guess, what is that actually?
So, this is a small little project on Lower Broadway that Rebecca's been working on, so she can talk.
So, actually, last year, we won the Green and Gateway Communities Grant, and that was about $20,000. And I, we put in two tree pit catch basins down at Lower Broadway. Back story is, we had to push the catch basins out, and now, there's about a three-inch gap. So, in order to make it look a little bit better, I'm going to have that whole sidewalk upgraded with permeable pavers and have it more of a green infrastructure-looking area. A lot of people take this sidewalk down to Mary O'Malley or to the park or the dog park. And permeable pavers are also environmentally friendly. They allow water to seep into the, to the ground, and it's more up-and-coming technology for our sidewalks. So, I thought this was a great area to kind of bring in permeable pavers into the city and round off the green infrastructure.
We have Community Development Block Grant, surface enhancements, $350,000, $340,000.
Yeah, so this is really informational purposes for you. All of this money is going to be funded by CDBG. This is, we do each year a CDBG roadway project with some portion of the $800,000. And for this year, we'll be proposing to do upgrades to Chester between Hawthorne and Lynn, and as well as Sharmet between Bellingham and Central. And so, it'll be new street, new sidewalks, and it'll be funded from Community Development Block Grant money.
And then, now, we have the Park and Pearl Plomerie Design. Is this in the square right there where, in front of Kershon's Paint, that area?
Yes, so this is really to advance the design of that significant project. So, remember, and this will be a project on the Transportation Improvement Program for the state and federal highway funding. So, just as, to remind you of the queue, we have full funding for Upper Broadway. We're in the queue for full funding for Lower Broadway. Both those projects are currently on the tip and funded in the tip. This is an effort to get Pearl and Park on the tip. It has scored very high preliminarily. In fact, I think it was the highest scored project that was presented to the Metropolitan Transportation Organization this year. So, we have to bring it to a higher level of design to advance it, and this is the money to do that. And it's $250,000 in Free Cash to advance that design. Eventually, it will get on the tip, and eventually, it'll be done. I certainly won't be here, but it will get done eventually.
To gain all those high scores, does that mean that we will probably see bike lanes in that congested area as part of the design and as maybe coming all the way from Long Pearl?
In short, yes. So, any, any federal or state-funded projects nowadays, we have to at least consider bike lanes. And if they can geometrically fit without safety or operational issues, we have to accommodate them. However, we are, we're extremely sensitive to the merchant needs in that area when it comes to parking, as well as when it comes to traffic circulation. So, a project of this caliber, you know, would seek to preserve all on-street spaces as well as identify a solution to ameliorate congestion. Most likely, that will be a traffic signal that would be tied into the signals that will eventually operate at Broadway and Congress and Broadway and Third. So, right now, we've schematically sketched this out with our traffic engineers, enough to produce a cost estimate for the tip. But we won't know for certain until we start the 25% design.
Okay. We have Cary Avenue water sewer roadway at $5 million.
Yeah, so this is the complete reconstruction of that stretch of Cary between Washington and Broadway. This is the remaining stretch that the sewer is not separated from drainage there. We have separation going forward towards the water up to Broadway. We have separation behind it, I think, on Washington. But we don't have separation in this intermediate segment. So, this will be complete renovation of all underground utilities, creating a separate drain and sewer line, drainage work, full repaving, new sidewalks, complete reconstruction. The estimated cost is $5 million, notwithstanding that it's a relatively small stretch of roadway. And this will be proposed to be paid from Opera funds.
That area, that area has a lot of flooding that occurs when there's high water or rather significant rainfall in a short period of time. My, my question is, would this help address it? Because I know that beyond, once you hit Washington Ave and you're no longer in Cary, that area had already been, was already part of a new water and sewer separation. But there still seems to be, as the runoff from the hill to cause problems, particularly for those homes on the other side of Washington Avenue. I've heard complaints from residents on Bloomingdale, Orange Street. So, does this help that in any which way or not at all? And also, I know that the, there's a lot of, those who have traveled on that Cary Ave, there's a big sort of hill sloping on that street. Is that going to be addressed also?
Okay, so there's a few questions in there, so I'm going to try to tackle them. I guess, pulling back, when we start talking about sewer separation, when I first got here, that was one of my big pushes, was to try to create a citywide plan, which we were able to do. So, understanding now the various projects that need to happen in order to accomplish goals for sewer separation, we basically have created the, the complete picture. This project in Cary Ave sort of connects work downstream and upstream that has been done in the past. There are a few smaller pieces that still need to kind of click together in order to make the complete puzzle. And right now, Cary Ave is considered the most important one of those. And so, we're, we're trying to tackle that now, in addition to do upgrading the water and rebuilding the roads and the sidewalks as well. In terms of handling CSO closure, the way this works is, you've got to, you've got to develop projects that complete the entire, what we call sewer shed. There are 14 different sewer sheds in the city. Three of them have outfalls that lead to overflows that go out into the, into the waterfront. This area is part of what's known as Chelsea Eight, and it's the, it's the, the outfall that has the largest number of overflows and the biggest volume of sewage that can go out into the, into the water. So, it's clearly a critical part of the program. If you're referring to localized flooding on the streets, that's kind of a different, that's a different picture than sewer separation. Sewer separation is needed because the sewers and drains connect to the same pipe, and they're inundated by water that makes its way from the surface into the pipe. What you see on the roads for street flooding is the water that doesn't get into the pipe. And those are usually in areas that are isolated. This project would seek to develop a drainage system that could handle surface flooding, but also take the water that does make its way into the drainage system and get it out of the sewer. So, you're really solving two problems at the same time. You also need to redesign the roads because you're trying to promote the movement of surface water in the right directions, and sometimes, that involves regrading the roads. So, really, our approach in the city is to go somewhere and sort of work on all the problems together and create a design that solves all the problems. Cary Ave will be no different.
So, will the capacity of handling a surge in rainwater be increased when this new comes, new, you know, are those new lines and whatever you call them, wells and so forth? Will they be, will they be a higher capacity than what there's currently there?
Yes, we, we always seek to increase the capacity of the systems to be able to handle flow. Another part of this citywide master plan that we created also included the development of hydraulic models so we actually can understand what's needed in terms of design. We can also understand what the interim conditions look like because you sort of have to build these things in phased pieces. So, you have to understand improvements in any given year. You have to model those through to make sure that you've, you're not exacerbating one problem by fixing another one. So, we have the tools to be able to do that properly.
Picking up on your phasing, how did this, how does this proposed phasing tie in with the current Broadway project? There's a lot of work being done on Broadway. And so, I'm curious as to when this starts? Is it going to be at the same time towards the tail end? Or are we going to have some little bit of separation? Because I can't imagine digging up both Cary Ave and Broadway at the same time and dealing with all that traffic, you know, roadblocks and such.
So, downtown Broadway utility work is, is nearing 90% design. But the belief is that we won't bid that for construction until this time next year.
You mean Upper Broadway? I'm talking Upper Broadway.
Oh, you're talking about Upper Broadway.
I'm talking Broadway, Revere to Broadway, St. Rose is currently under a lot of construction, and that work continues. When, I don't know when the completion date is. So, while, when, when does that project end and when does this project start so they're not going on at the same time?
So, the water and sewer work for Upper Broadway is complete. The remainder of the work, and Alex can, can add some more on this, the remainder of the work includes surface improvements and some drainage work underneath. That work is, Alex can kind of give more details on the timeline of it, but we're, we're looking to get that project out to bid soon. Do you want to jump in?
So, Alex, you can understand what I'm saying is, you got the T-bone there. You don't want to have Cary Ave. You don't wanna have Cary Ave causing problems with the traffic and at the same time working on Broadway. So that's what I wanna know, when does one start and the other end?
Absolutely. So we actually advertised the Upper Broadway project with MassDOT on Saturday. Our goal is to have a contractor onboard this spring. We're projecting an August construction start. That might vary by a month or two depending on DOT. It's a two-year project, so it will go until the end of calendar year 2024 and it will overlap with this proposed project. So we will have to coordinate the work zones on Broadway as we sequence work northward from City Hall, so it doesn't overlap in a way that is detrimental to, to traffic flow. Moreover, the Broadway project will be similar to what you saw this past summer for the first year, where there's contractors installing utilities, starting at City Hall, working in two crews, operating northward up to the Revere City Line. Come, you know, the end of 2023, early 2024 is when the road reconstruction will begin. And that's going to entail a lot more in terms of traffic disruption. So in terms of scheduling this, this DPW job, we'd wanna do as much of the high-impact work as early as possible, so it doesn't overlap with the roadway reconstruction of Broadway. That's really that critical piece that could have a large impact for residents.
So is there a reason why not to delay Cary by one year? Just so that we're not being, you know, overlapping these two projects? Or is construction management gonna be so well-done that we, you know, residents are not going to see the? Because again, this, that's a bus route, so many things going on there. And it's a major traffic where people thoroughfare cut through that area. So it's a major intersection, so I can see a lot of, of diversion. Parker, John, all getting overrun by cars that are trying to cross over and such. So I'm just trying to figure out, is it, you know, are we looking at possibly being able to delay some of this work on one, at least on Cary Ave, so that we don't have that issue?
So we would have to delay it for at least two years, since sort of this first year will be utility work on Broadway that, you know, we can more or less coordinate around. It's when the roadway reconstruction starts on Broadway that it'll be trickier. But let us, let us confer internally and circle back with you. I think that's a valid, you know, point that we'll discuss.
Okay. Council Robinson?
Can I just follow up with that? I mean, one of the reasons why we were, we didn't wanna defer this project for two years is because it is a perfect project for ARPA funding and we have to encumber these ARPA funds by the end of December of 2024. So this is really a perfect, fits right in with ARPA in terms of a funding source.
That's, I can recognize that. Council Robinson?
Would be to Lou. Being that we've been doing all these separations, you know, how I've been tracking the water? Has MWRA made any improvements to their meters? Being that all this construction, the separation of the water and the waste?
So there's, there's two sets of metering that happens. There's the drinking water system and that, that's, there are five meters that, that bring water into the city. Those, our sewer separation program really doesn't have a whole lot to do with that. Our water meter replacement program seeks to align with their metering so we can make sure that we're accounting for all the water that we purchase and make sure that we're selling it and getting the revenue that comes along with that. On the sewer separation side, one of the challenges that I have seen since I've been here is that a lot of the sewer separation work that has been done to date has been done from the top, from the upstream end of these sewer areas, towards the downstream. So that what we're doing is building and replacing infrastructure with two sets of pipes from upstream to downstream. When we get to the bottom of the project area, we're reconnecting them into the old system. So we're not necessarily doing sewer separation. What we're doing from the top of these areas is separating the infrastructure that these areas use, only to then reconnect them downstream. So it's, 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 there really hasn't been a lot of opportunity to realize the savings that should go along with sewer separation because the city historically started from the wrong end or started from the easier end, but not the end that would have demonstrated some of this, this, this savings. I think part of that is that the, it's easier to start at the upper end because the pipes are smaller. What we're seeing now is, now we're tackling projects at the downstream end where the pipes are bigger and the project costs are larger. And, you know, unfortunately, to try to correlate those, the savings to the effort that's been done, what we're hoping is the project over the next three or four years are gonna be tackling those bigger efforts downstream. And then suddenly, the savings realized from all the work for the last 20 years upstream suddenly will all show up at the same time. I don't, I'm not sure if that was the, a complete answer of what you wanted.
Kinda not, but I'll live with that for now.
Okay.
Council Brown?
Thank you. Thanks for that overall. So I was reading some of your definitions here. So when you say there's gonna be a new transformation of that area, is it just the sidewalk, just the building up? Or is it gonna be a different type of pa-, traffic pattern?
No, I don't think the tra-, the traffic pattern isn't proposing to change. It's the, the, all the, the expensive part of this is the underground utility work. But when the project is done, it will include complete renovation of roadway, new street, new sidewalk.
But same direction, same, no, I, I see a lot of cuts in the sidewalks and?
Yeah, the curb cuts will remain the same. The direction of the traffic, you know, that's up to the traffic commission. But there's nothing proposed to be changed. But it will, it will be a transformation in terms of the old street and sidewalk will look a lot nicer.
Yeah, I understand that. It's almost like out front here, we got this transformation. And when folks now come down, you have to go all the way out instead of just turning and going down Washington Ave. So it, the first few months, and I think folks are now getting a little used to it, but it was like really congested. I mean, you'd have to come here, you can go this way to the fire station, come back here, going down Washington Ave. But you had to go so far out when you would normally just take this quick turn.
Yeah, there's nothing like that being proposed for, as part of this renovation of Cary Ave.
Okay.
Council Taylor?
So this use of $5 million of ARPA funds for this project? How, I agree, it's fortuitous that we, that we get this money for such a purpose as this. How, how far does this kind of move up the schedule for kind of completing this overhaul or getting us out of the danger zone of catastrophic failures in the sewer system that we, you know, are gonna face? I mean, we were told it was, you know, we were about a 20-year?
I don't think a whole lot. So this, we're advancing this particular Cary Ave segment because it fits nicely within ARPA and we have this window. This segment is the next segment that should get done for sewer separation because as Lou pointed out, it is, there's this gap between separated sewer on Washington, separated sewer from Broadway heading towards the waterfront. That's not all complete yet, but a lot of sewer separation has happened from Broadway to the waterfront. A lot of sewer separation has happened further out on Washington. But this gap remains, so it's an important gap to fill.
I understand. I'm just, so I guess my point is, we're still kind of on the same timeline that we were before. This doesn't really move up the, get, get, this piece doesn't really accomplish that much towards the kind of getting out of the danger zone.
You know, I guess Lou can add. The sewer separation plan that was completed and presented to the city from Duberry is like a 50-year plan. So this is not really gonna make a whole lot of difference in that major.
I, I, I realize in the overall plan, I guess what I'm talking about is getting kind of into a more safer thing where, where the, the, the odds go down significantly of a, some sort of a catastrophic failure. That's, that's what, that, that's the thing that I've been worried about as far as infrastructure problems in the city. And that's why I'm saying, you know, an extra, spending an extra $5 million on this to get it done now as, as opposed to having it going through the system. You know, how much time does that shave off the, the over? Do you understand what I'm asking?
Yes, I don't think a whole lot, but maybe Lou has a better sense.
So like most plans, you, you're trying to look at the top down and then prioritize the, the problems, you know, as best you can.
Yeah.
This is an area where we believe these funds, which we're fortunate enough to get through the ARPA program, are gonna have the most positive impact because I think it helps us realize some of the gains that were achieved in previous projects where we haven't quite, you know, finished that part of the puzzle. You know, in, in researching kind of the overall picture of, of the city's infrastructure, it's pretty clear that between, let's say, 1945 and 1995, the city really didn't do a whole lot of anything. And given the age of a lot of the pipes, most of the systems that haven't been replaced or upgraded from 1995, when the city really started to, you know, do more of this work in earnest, anything that hasn't been replaced is, is completely past its useful life. So when you talk about avoiding problems, we can have a problem virtually anywhere. We had a sewer collapse on, last week on a section of Marginal Street. We had to replace 70 feet of the sewer. You know, and, and that could have, you know, that was probably ready to go 15, 20 years ago. It just happened to go last week. We have other sections where, where it's kind of the same thing. One of the focus, one of the areas of focus of this master plan was to look at areas associated with combined sewer overflows. Right now, MWRA has responsibility for controlling those. But a city with combined sewer system is really who is contributing the majority of the problem. Once MWRA can convince the federal government that they've done everything they said they were going to do and spent all the money and achieved all the criteria, met all the thresholds that they were going to do, and they are relieved from that burden, the city will somehow wind up being a lot more in responsible charge of what happens in the future. So the whole idea of a program and any of these sewer separation programs is to help get a lot of things that need to be built now, built as soon as possible. So that when we have the ultimate responsibility, we're that much closer to not needing these overflow areas. So these three areas out of the 14, we consider the most critical. Downtown Broadway is the, the second largest. But it's an area that we focused on because we don't wanna spend all the money to rebuild downtown Broadway and then have all this pipeline work underneath that still has to be fixed. So the idea was to, was to, was to do two projects together. So.
Thank you.
So now we have the Central Avenue utility design and that's $200,000?
Yeah, this is sort of in line with what we just talked about. This is another se-, there's been a lot of sewer separation in this area of Central, Essex, Willow. And so this segment of Central from Hawthorne to Highland remains a, a combined area. And this is money to design a separation project for that area to be done sometime and constructed sometime in the future. But this is design work for that segment.
Now that we've basically read all the ones that have to do with streetworks and, and utility design as such, I know that when the city goes out and plans to do major reconstruction on, on roadways like this, they take advantage of it and also do their new water and sewer lines and such. And I know that companies such as the Gas Company comes out and they participate in this because they have to take advantage of the streets being open and run possibly new gas lines. This is the bit where I say, I would wish that the city could find a way to force the electric company to dig its lines also when these streets are opening, to remove as many of the poles that we have and run everything and conduits underneath for a number of reasons. One, primarily, safety reasons. There, we have way too many times I've seen those lines come too close. We saw the fire on Marginal with the house having that rubbing of the li-, of the, the electrical live wire up against the house. I've seen aesthetically, I go down Eden Street and I look at the, the wiring that is down that street. It looks atrocious. And when firefighters have to try to fight a fire, trying to overcome and use a ladder truck in those, in those cases where they have to overcome the number of different lines and wires and electrical and cable and such, I think it just makes more sense that as we are doing this rolling of new streets and sidewalks and utilities and water and sewer lines, that more and more poles are taken down and that the only poles that are out there should be our light poles and that's it. And none of these wires and transformers going up and down broad, well, any streets because it's done on some major streets, but not here. And I can't help but notice that when you walk around, say Admiral Hill, there are no telephone poles anywhere to be found. Everything is dug underneath and it's more pleasing and it's quietly safer. So I would think that regardless of the position of the electric company, say, as well as expensive for us to do, have at it, but it's safer and you don't see any, you don't see of these lines in Montreal because ice storms and such and what's going on there. So I just, I'd like to see a more aggressive push by the city in saying, when we do these streets over, the electric companies are part of, you know, taking these poles down and getting less and less wires running from A to Z.
So I will say, we always coordinate with both utility companies when we're doing streetwork so that they're upgrading their infrastructure before we finish the street. That coordination has happened quite well in the last few years. We just don't have leverage in any way over Eversource to get them to put all that wiring underground. I mean, we can certainly encourage them, but we just, we're, we, they are a state-regulated utility that has really no responsibility and, or, and has, does not have to answer to the city, to any municipality. It's something municipalities have long argued to the legislature against, that we have no authority over utility companies, but that remains the case. So I hear you, we will advocate for it. We just, when push comes to shove, have no ability to force the issue.
Well, except when they wanna dig up a street and run a whole new conduit through down Williams Street and they need our permission. So there are times when they have to come to the city and ask for permission to do something. And this is what, this is the perfect time when you ask about mitigation, say, well, this is part of it. Come, you know, there are times on this day when they do have to ask for a permit to go digging on our streets.
There are, and we got some decent mitigation from that project on Williams. But, you know, the, there's not a big project right at the moment that they're seeking our support for, so. In any event, the point well taken.
The other one, now we have the concrete decorative pole replacement for $60,000. What areas are we targeting there?
Yeah, we just, we set money aside every year to replace some of the concrete poles. Most of them are, could, most of them could be replaced. And so we try to tackle a few of them each year. And we usually set aside a little bit of money in this capital plan to do that. Same with the elec-, same with the electrical boxes that are the one after the next one. We do the same thing, put money aside to try to upgrade the electrical boxes. We have many of them in the city. A lot of them could use replacement. We try to knock off two or so a year. The one I skipped was the lead service replacement. It's the one I talked about initially, which is the one borrowing that we will do. We've been doing this lead service replacement for the last few years, borrowing money from MWRA to do isolated replacements. Most, this is sort of isolated replacement work. Most, this is sort of isolated replacement work. We do always replace lead service line when we're reconstructing a street, for everyone on the street who has a lead service line. So, that's a, that's a part of every construction project now that we do. We don't leave that street until all the lead lines that we've been able to identify are removed. This program is sort of the isolated ones that we've also identified. We hire a contractor to go and do this work, independent of our major street reconstruction work. So, this year we're proposing, there's a lot of them still out there. We're proposing, the last few years we borrowed three hundred thousand from this program. We're proposing to borrow half a million dollars for this program. One, because it's the only borrowing we're doing, and two, we do wanna try to get these lead lines removed as quickly as possible. It's a ten-year, zero-interest loan.
What's in the stormwater management plan for a hundred and twenty-five thousand?
That's a typical plan that we always put in this, in this C, C I P. It's for the sort of permitting work that we're required to do, operating the system, but Rebecca can probably talk a little more detail on it.
The stormwater management plan, we work with our engineers Weston and Sampson, and we oversee I D D E work and the M S four to meet compliance every year, and that work covers the engineering services and the amount of work going into I D D E, illicit discharge removal. So, it, the more money that we have, actually, we actually save a lot of money by working in-house and accompanying them on the stormwater, testing that we do twice a year, and then also Siobhan, our compliance manager, does a lot of the M S four permitting herself. So, that leaves a, a extra money to do the I D D E work, and hopefully continue to remove those illicit discharges in our system.
Tom, one question I wanted to ask about all the cost of the projects previously when it comes to roadwork. That includes the police details, correct? Is that inside there?
On the construction projects, we always build the price in for police details.
So, it's not part of the city budget, any other, as a separate item?
If we're doing our own roadway work, yes. So, you will see some line items in city projects for police detail work. So, I think there's some money in the D P W operating budget for police details, but it's for work that we're doing in-house order, but on these major construction projects, we always build in the cost of the police detail as part of the construction cost being proposed.
Okay.
The final request is for two hundred and fifty thousand out of free cash to do some repair, replacement of fiber that's in danger of failing. So, we did have Dewberry do a major infrastructure review of all of the fiber that we use in the city to connect E nine-one-one, police and fire, and they've identified, they have a, they did a complete report and analysis. They've identified some areas where the fiber is in danger of failing, and so, this is some money to address some of those high-risk areas identified by Dewberry.
Any questions? No? So, I think if any of my colleagues have any follow-up questions they'd like to have to the city manager, feel free to just contact him, be it email or phone. I think he's gonna provide us, I think, some feedback on a questioning tonight regarding a little bit more specific details and some of the requests. We will work with, I'll work with Fatima and Paul on scheduling this for a public hearing, and also a vote by the city council to adopt pending any amendments to the proposed C I P.
Set up a C I P?
Yeah.
Who's gonna give us the figures?
Right.
Just in April or early May?
Yeah, we'll probably prepare an order based on tonight's, that, yeah, so, I'll have Ned start working on that, and we can get something to the council probably for some time in April to schedule for when you wish.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Ricky. Back in the booth.